I'm going to call the village meeting to order, or start with a pledge of the flag. Kind of as an explanation for those of you who don't regularly attend village board meetings, the mayor is on the television set. I'm up here just doing the busy work of running the meeting, but he's still here. So if you have concerns and questions to address the mayor, please do so. Should I go ahead, Mr. Mayor?
What?
Okay.
Sorry.
You don't ever want to say that. Approval of the public hearing in village board meetings from the June 16th meeting need, do we, what do we need to do with that? We vote, did not resolution online, do we need to do something?
No, they just make a note of it.
Okay.
Some people are aware of that, that was done.
Okay, the next part of the meeting is public comment, there's a couple of...
Before we do that, I would suggest that the board adopt a resolution which confirms Resolution 82/2022, since that was not adopted at an open meeting.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, since I made the original motion.
I will second it, since I seconded the original.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to recuse myself once again, since I signed that agreement for some other party, so.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to public comments. We have a couple of parties before opening up to citizens' comments. Did want to explain the rules of public comments. Expect everyone will come forward to the microphone, give us your name, your address, and then limit your comments to a reasonable amount of time. I'm not, I'm not going to sit here with a stopwatch, but not, listen, don't really want to go on and on for two hours. Good, starting with Matt Hunt from the Greater Baldensville Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board. Matt Hunt, 8292 Oswego Road, and as you said, the president of the Board for the Greater Baldensville Chamber of Commerce. Here tonight regarding Taste Baldensville on Saturday, September 17th, requesting a waiver of the rental fee for Paycom Royal Island, and also requesting a waiver for the open container law for the event. And we have already submitted our insurance and indemnification agreement, so I think all that is in order.
Long as all is all set.
Yes, we're all set.
Can you share where the funds that you raised, are funds being raised during the event, or?
There is some proceeds that come out of the event. We make a donation out of it every year to peace. Some of it goes to help fund the chamber as well, as we're limited on income due to our event, it's only events and membership income, but it's so far, it's been a good event, there's a lot of cost associated with it, so there hasn't been huge profits, but we've made donations, I don't remember, I think it's maybe $1,500 to peace for, after each event.
Okay.
We're discussing this because there are village costs to having you out there, and if you were a private, I don't know what you are, but a chamber is different than, it's kind of an odd animal. We'd expect, that's why we have rental fees, to offset our expenses. If you were a total not-for-profit, like we just dealt with the Rotary Club, we waived that because everything they raise goes off somewhere into the world to help somebody. So we were discussing whether or not we felt the chamber should provide something back toward the village, and we don't have anything in place or anything in mind.
Okay.
How do you feel about that?
Be open to a discussion about it. I always feel part of it is what you guys give to the community, and we appreciate that, and Chuck and his crew puts a lot into it. So yeah, it hasn't been discussed, but I'd be open to discussing it. As I said, there's a lot of cost already, so it's very hard to make any money on this, but certainly would be willing to...
Would the Board be willing, what I'd like to have is you guys think about it, you know, and if at the end of your event, you did well, and you think maybe sending the village $100 or $200 to help pay for the DPW setting up and cleaning up and doing what they do, we'd appreciate it, and then maybe, because it seems odd to be discussing this while you're standing here, trying to get it together for this year.
Right.
Maybe by next year, we could have something in place, but I would just ask you to think about, you're Board, to think about it.
Yeah, we can work on that, I'll bring it up at our next Board meeting, we'll discuss it for sure.
That, mine could have a motion to waive the rental fee?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And Matt, of course, you're dealing the security deposit, that's still...
Yes.
That's all set.
Okay. We need a second motion regarding the open container law.
Make a motion again.
Second.
Mike, any, any comment from the police department?
No.
Okay, all righty. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Thank you, good luck.
Very good.
And we appreciate bringing an event to the community, I don't mean to...
Absolutely, no, no.
...
I get it, I understand, so.
Brain cloud here on you.
We do a lot of events that we have to work, we have to collaborate on, so we appreciate what you guys do to help us too, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you Board, appreciate your time.
Thanks, Matt.
The Lions Club, would you, did you guys want to discuss, did you want to discuss anything with us regarding the agreement that you guys came up with this week? I see you're out here, I assumed that... His face looks like he wanted to.
Hard way to parent, you do the homework all day. I believe that, you know, we had a very successful fruitful meeting with Chuck and Louise this morning, and the engineer Greg, and we agree with the list that Louise issued by email a little earlier today.
So we're all set to move forward?
I believe so.
All right.
I think we're also here just in case you had any additional questions that were coming our way, we didn't think there would be.
No, not from the Board, you deal with that animal.
Actually, I was going to bring it up during Public Works, but it was a great meeting this morning, we got some things ironed out that were just kind of up in the air, and we're hoping to start, our playground is going to be delivered on the 12th, and they're hoping to get started the 17th, we got a bunch of work we got to do down there, but we're going to incorporate Thursday, and it should be a great addition too. It's going to be quite an area down there, it's going to be a nice addition, and it went very well today, and everything, everybody agrees to where we are.
I don't believe community parks are secret anymore, but used to be a real quiet little place, but it's certainly grown over the last few years, and as a village, we appreciate what Lions brings to our community also.
When this is done, you're going to have a very enviable play area within that park.
Excellent.
Do you have any other questions for us?
No, we appreciate your patience, I know you bought the swing a year ago.
Two years ago.
Two years ago? The wheels of government are square.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Now, citizens' comments, anybody wishing to address the Board? If you please come forward, as I said, give your name, address, and share your comments
How you doing? Joe Saracini, 59 Oswego Street, right here in the Village. I want to start off by thanking you all for your service to the Village. It's not easy, and a lot of times you're hearing from people that are frustrated. I'm not frustrated, I'm not here with a big ax to grind, but I do think it's important to point a couple of things out when it comes to aesthetics in the Village. We are both cursed and blessed with having New York State routes course through the middle of the Village, Route 48, Route 31, and 370. You know, when the road's great, you know, and, you know, when it needs repair and the state comes in, that's great, when it's in disrepair, the Village gets the blame for it, but all roads lead through Balden, so it brings a lot of people into the Village, and it's, I think it's, as an optimist, I think it's a great thing. That being said, every once in a while, we have an opportunity to partner with the state with, with infrastructure projects, and we just saw, I think, well, two of them. One, we were a beneficiary of a grant, I believe, on a streetscape improvement plan, and the other one was the great work that they did along Syracuse Street. I think it was done extremely efficiently, and it worked well, I think, with Chuck. I've talked to Chuck about this, I mentioned this to Trustee Stevens, and I mentioned one other time to the Mayor about this. My concern is, while the roads look great, and the sidewalk looks great, what, what we should pay attention to are the details. You know, we have granite curbing in the Village of Baldensville, and the state is always going to opt for a less expensive option when it comes to infrastructure. For example, the sidewalks that went in are beautiful in front of the Plaza across from Beeville Diner, but they're concrete, and most of the, most of the curbs that we have in the Village, like I say, are granite. You know, the Syracuse Street project that was done by the state, you know, blacktop tip-ups, I don't believe is appropriate for the Village of Baldensville. I mean, if you drive out towards Cato, Meridian, you know, even at the four corners of the Plainville Road intersection, I mean, there's curbs, there's sidewalks, and they look good. And, you know, we're not a, we're not a cul-de-sac off of a development somewhere, you know, we're the Village of Baldensville, we have state routes going through the Village, and even if we had to pay a little bit extra to get those curbs, granite curbs last for a long time. If you look at the Village Square, we went with granite curbing, it's in great shape. If you look at Marble Street, the improvements we made to that park, we went with granite curbs, they're in great shape, they last, and they look good, and they're consistent looking. So I'm not here to, you know, rip anybody's head off, but, you know, there will be opportunities down the road to address those things, and even if you had, I don't know if we, if we have an engineer on staff anymore, usually that, that person would be the point person for all state projects being done in the Village, because we are a stakeholder. Maybe designate somebody on the Department of Public Works to communicate back and forth with those state entities. But, you know, again, thanks for your service, things are looking great in the Village, it's good to see life back in the Village, things are coming around, you guys are doing a great job. And on behalf of, on another note, on behalf of Kiwanis Club, thank you for approving the fireworks permit for the graduation up at the high school, it was a great event, so thanks for getting on that quick.
Anyone else wishing to address the Board?
Is this general comments, or something more specific to one of the upcoming? Would you rather hold, hold our peace for that time?
Hold, let me...
Well, we can even do the pending now, I mean, it's just, must be under the pending business, is it?
Yes.
The support letter.
Sure.
I think we can do the comments now.
If anybody wants to discuss that item, that, item A, or not even the specific of the Mayor signing the letter, but if you're here to discuss the proposed project apartments, this is a good time to do it, I think. While we're all awake.
Good to see you all again from the last meeting. Again, I'm Andrew Nolan of 97 East Oneida Street, and again, as we consider, I went to the planning board, meaning just to, just again, to start to understand the process, because obviously it's going to be a lengthy process of just trying to push such a large endeavor of 140 units, you know, that they average a car and a half, so, as someone that lives right on the corner, and the traffic is probably my number one concern, because A, it's hard for me to get on my driveway. On a normal basis, we have enough tractor-trailers, traffic, school buses, you name it, and then to have one of the main exits of what's being proposed of 140, whether they start with 70 and expand to 140, that's a lot of cars and a lot of traffic. A lot of my neighbors were all here with similar concerns, I mean, I'm more personally against the rezoning, you know, of that to an R2. I personally wouldn't mind seeing a development put there, 15, 20 houses out of that 15 acres, so it's not, I'm not against someone using that land, because, you know, it can be used, but that's, that's a tall ass for an area that's already burgeoning with traffic, and I know the police department has trouble stopping the amount of tractor-trailers, whether it be at Four Corners or, or otherwise, it's just, I mean, since the pandemic, it seems like it's just been an epidemic of itself, but, so I'm, I'm just, that's, that's more, one of my, some of my biggest concerns is between traffic, I mean, obviously, it's 18 months of construction, displacing a lot of wildlife into my yard that I've worked hard to, you know, keep at bay, you know, but I appreciate your time and consideration, though.
Kevin Walker, 21 Phillips Street. Kind of piggyback on what Andrew was talking about. The traffic right now is really, we feel an unsafe condition, and by adding all the additional traffic, I really think it's only going to compound the problems we're having trying to get on just Route 31, and that's just on Phillips Street. I can't really speak about the other streets, but I can't imagine it's any better. And, and again, tractor-trailer, there's, there's just a ton of traffic. For us, any other removal of the trees, I mean, anything that goes on at the high school, comes right through, you know, would come right straight through, whether we'd be listening to the band, or any athletic events, there would be nothing to buffer the, the sound coming back through the trees. And again, we're not, we're not opposed to multiple homes, to one and two family homes, just the, the thought of just having that many apartments, and again, with the amount of cars that would be attached to it, it'd be almost impossible to get through town. And we're wondering too, is, with the, with the addition of all these people, is the school system going to be overcrowded? Are they going to be able to handle the influx of possible students to the school systems? And, well, pretty much that's it. You know, the safety of us trying to get out, and I've seen it too, people don't want to stop at the stop sign, or they do the rolling stop, tractor-trailers, buses, it's just, it's very, very difficult to get out on Route 31 from Phillips Street. That's pretty much all I got.
Thank you.
You also have a letter from him.
Hello.
Mike.
I don't live on Phillips Street, but I live on Mechanic Street, and I did call the police department about the increased traffic we've been having, and especially people not stopping, and Elizabeth and Mechanic, we had a guy almost roll his truck, took, almost took out another car, the smell of burnt rubbers in the air, so my concern is if, because they say 70 units, but they want to build 140, and by my estimation, that's going to be about 240 more cars, mostly coming out of Oneida Street, and they're going to come down Mechanic Street. And we just, we have, there's enough traffic.
So you live on Mechanic?
I live on Mechanic.
Could you give the clerk your name?
My name is Sally, I live on Mechanic.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm just, it, it's really, really, like, the warehouse was built on 60th Street, now we have a little bit more traffic, and I just, you know, we're just having such a problem with speeding, like, everyone, like, they think they're going to make the light, so they're, they're really going 50 miles an hour on a 30 mile per hour street, and it's unsafe, we have animals, we have kids, you know. I just, I asked, I called to ask if one of those speed signs could be placed?
Yeah, we do have one of those speed signs, I don't know if you've seen it around.
I've seen it around, but they said I had to come to the, the person I spoke to at the police department said I had to come here to get one placed.
That's not true, I just put a note on it too, and, and I'll look up the call, do you remember when that was?
I do not.
Okay, that's not a big deal.
It was before the, the planning committee meeting that was on a Tuesday.
28.
28, yes. It was in that time.
But regardless, I was just kind of looking up just for my own personal, but what I'll plan to do is, I promise you it's going to be next week, we have a rotation, but I'll make sure that Mechanic Street gets a foot into the rotation, so I'd say within the next couple of weeks, I'll make sure that the speed, that the speed century gets on.
But my other concern is, like, we keep, the community keeps building, but the traffic doesn't seem to ever be addressed. Like, you know, my sister lives on the Van Buren side of town, less than a mile from my house, it can take me 20 minutes to drive there. And I'm sorry, I live in the Village, I don't know if you all live in the Village, like the proper Village, not like, not like the edges of the Village, not in like the little subdivisions, but like in the Village, and it's just, it, it's been a thing. The traffic is, you know, like when school's in session, can't get out of the driveway during certain times of the day, and now we got to watch out for these people speeding, and I'm afraid they're going to just cream my car. It, it's hazardous, but thank you.
Jim Fredericks, I live on Phillips Street. Just to reiterate what she's saying, the traffic is unbelievable. The people speeding is unbelievable, and nobody does anything about it. And I'm not talking five, 10 miles an hour over the speed limit, they're flying down to head towards Phoenix, and somebody's going to get hurt. I mean, there are people that walk the road, we have families that walk the road, it's just not safe. I mean, I've lived there for 25 years, never had one trick-or-treater on Halloween, because their parents will not come down that road, and I'm in the Village before it turns into 60th Road. And the school buses, they're not supposed to be using the road, and they do. We were told they were supposed to go down 31 and come back to Radisson to go back to their new garage. They're all just going down the road. And we've called up there a few times, and, oh, we're going to take care of it, we're going to take care of it, they don't. They just don't do what they say. And it's like Kevin was saying, the bumper zone from the high school, that, whatever they do down there, the sound just blasts up through to our, our houses. They cut those trees all out of there, it's going to be crazy, you know, it's, this whole thing, and the main thing is the traffic, they can't handle it. The intersection, Oneida, where they're going to bring that road up through to Parkway, which is so close to the stop sign, that's going to be a bad thing, really bad. Accidents are going to be there, it's just not a good thing. It's like they were saying, houses, if you want to put single-family houses down there, they would be probably okay, but, and this is phase one, and there's going to be more phases to come after that, it's not going to be good, not going to be good.
Okay.
That's right.
My name is Valerie, I live at 91 East Oneida Street, and I'm going to reiterate what everybody is saying. I was here last week, I said it last week, the traffic is unbelievable. I didn't even know the buses weren't supposed to be using that road, because I watch the buses every morning, every afternoon. I watch tractor-trailers blow through that stop sign at Oneida and Phillips every single day. Somebody is going to get killed there right now, that's without building potentially 140 additional residences. The high school, absolutely, I can be in my backyard, I can sing all the words to the loudspeaker that they're playing during the games.
Do you stand up for the, the National?
Absolutely, every single time, and I applaud when they sing the anthem, but yeah, I mean, you can hear it clear as a bell right now, I can't imagine, when you're cutting down all those trees. When they're talking about the animals, everybody loves animals, everybody enjoys watching them. What I will say is, if you look on 60th Road, there doesn't seem to be a lot of animals or roadkill, because of the forest there, they kind of know their boundaries. You're going to displace all of that, but number one, the traffic, we can't deal with the traffic right now. There are times I have to sit in my driveway on Oneida Street for five minutes to try to pull out, either direction, doesn't matter, people are talking about getting to 31, I just want to get to Oneida Street that I live on, so, thank you for listening, but we already have too much.
Thank you. Just don't be shy.
I guess I should have an input in this. My name is Nasser Masruri, I live in 12 Phillips Street. We moved there in 2008. My kids were little, you know, I would say five, eight, and 12. My oldest, Matthew, is in the Air Force now, so God bless him. Jake is in college, and Paige's got one more year. The kids have always grown up, this is, this is a neighborhood, and unlike these folks, we love the music, I got to tell you that. There are times that we're out there singing along, we have no problem with that, but like these folks, our biggest problem is traffic. Traffic, and I don't know if you're familiar, well, you have to be, Spruce Street, kids, everywhere from three-year-old till 15-year-old, Pine Street, again, same thing, they're all kids, if you go in the afternoon around now, you see them with their basketball thing out, playing basketball. And, yep, and now because of the buses, again, something I didn't know, that buses are not supposed to go through there, but they do come from Phillips and East Oneida, and they merge right by the railroad where they have, every one of them has to stop for five seconds, between 6:40 in the morning till nine, and then again, starts around 1:30 till 3:00, 3:30, because Eldon, Baker, Durkey, they, all these kids have to come in and be shipped out, so every one of them stops for five seconds by the rail. There is a train of yellow buses that goes all the way to 31, and they merge between Phillips and East Oneida. And there are kids who walk home from school, my biggest problems that, as some said here, kids are in danger. Sorry, folks who are late, and by nature, people who are late, they drive fast, they drive crazy, there's youth involved, so, like some said here, it won't be long before we have major incidences, that it would cost lives or major damages. Again, again, like others say here, a few houses in that area would be great, but 70, 140, the vagrancy, the issues we will have, it'll be beyond something that we can deal with. Just thought you should know this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right.
He's encouraging me to say something. Hi, Dick. If you want to remain friends. I'm Nancy Han Walker. I was born in the house that I'm living in, my... Um, my parents bought that property at twenty-one Phillips Street in nineteen forty-seven. Um, so I graduated in nineteen sixty-eight from Baldensville. I taught at the high school, if, I've taught in all the schools in Baldensville. So I'm really invested in this community, I love it. But I can tell you that it's a lot different than when I was a kid, and it was a gravel road and that sort of thing. It's different on Phillips Street slash Sixty Road these days. A couple of days ago, I, I was, um, because I live there, I'm very careful when I, when I get up to the four-way stop sign. I stopped, and somebody plowed, come right through coming up the hill on Oneida Street, because they don't stop at that, I don't know why they don't like that four-way stop sign, but if you travel that on a regular basis, you're gonna find out people don't stop there. So, um, and my neighbor across the street, Masu, somebody slammed into her, and she hasn't driven her car since, and that was over a year ago. So, I know accidents happen there, there was an accident at the bottom of Parkway Drive, and that's where they want the road to come out. Greg was kind enough to leave the maps out so we could go look at them, and that's right where they want their, one of their exits to come out of this. And I'm really against that, because we already have accidents there. And, um, we really do have a lot of people that, you know, kids trying to ride bikes there and, and stuff, and it's scary now. I can't even imagine what it would be like if we added seventy or a hundred and forty. Um, and we're not against, you know, it's zoned now for one-to-two family housing, okay, so put some one-to-two family houses in there, but please don't put any apartment buildings in there and make it so much worse. And something that I'm not, I, I just became aware of, there's city buses going down there now. I've never seen city buses, and I, like I said, I was born there. We have city buses going, I don't know what they're doing down there, but we have.
Go up on Brundage Road and park in the shade, I don't know.
Is that what they do?
I don't know what they're doing either.
But every single day, we have city buses going down our street. I'm like, what are they doing down there? So, um, and, and I know, I've talked to the, our wonderful police department about our, the tractor trailers, people on that road, we've called many times, I mean, Jack across the, well, he doesn't live there anymore, he moved to Florida, he couldn't stand it anymore, because it broke windows out of his house. That's what those tractor trailers do. I don't know why the people, why the companies don't keep them from doing it, but they still come down there, so we have a lot of issues, um, we don't need to add to them. Thank you.
There's still people in the audience who haven't spoken, I don't wanna, I don't wanna stop you from speaking. Is there anyone else? All right.
Uh, I'm Mike Ponabianco, and I live at Four Parkway Drive. I think really I can summarize what everybody's trying to do, is turn this back to you guys. The proposed, uh, two proposed plans, Ish, the, the one was talking about, projects one of the second entrance, I believe it's in phase two, to come out in front of Parkway. I think also the entrance to the first phase probably needs some redevelopment. You have the technology, you have the engineering firms, you have everything that you guys need to redirect the traffic, because we have failed to direct the traffic, the tractor trailers, and all the other things that we've added the years around the community. So, I think that it's an opportunity for us to work together, that maybe you guys should send it back and say, can we have a redesign on an entrance and exit, to kinda help the people on Phillips, Oneida, and Parkway have a little bit of security, and maybe a little confidence that people are listening to what we're, we're going through. So, I think, I would propose that it would be awesome to have, you know, all that extra space for people to be in the community, but I think that you guys should redesign the entrance exit. Just my thought. Thanks.
Thank you. So anyway, we can ask a question?
Yeah, I don't know if we have answers, but go ahead and ask questions.
Is that the only place they've proposed for this? I mean, if they go back like between Smokey Hollow and Inco Boulevard, the place, there's so much more space over there, and there are many ways to get in and out of, I mean, in, out of the village into Six-Ninety, Thirty-One. The place that they have proposed for now, the only way you can come into the village is Phillips Street, East Oneida. The only way you can go to John Glenn is three, this, that would be like a whole, everything is clustered right there. Do they have another proposal for like going a little bit farther out, maybe?
Not that they've shared with us, I mean, this, that, that parcel was for sale, as you know.
Oh, fuck.
You know, and these are people that viewed it as an opportunity. Beyond that, I don't know if they have Plan B.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments, I'm gonna close this portion of the meeting. Is there any I don't want? Anything? Okay. Then we'll move on to trustees' comments. And because I started the left side, I'm gonna start at the right. But Nate was over at the left last time, he's just moved, so he gets to go first again.
He just always wants to go first.
Yeah, um, well, I just wanted to hope everybody had a good Fourth of July, um, and everybody still has all ten fingers and all ten toes. Um, and outside of that, I, I got nothing, I'll just stick to the agenda.
I'll keep it short and stick with the agenda.
I'm gonna add something to the agenda. Under new business, am I doing this or am I waiting on you?
You can do it.
It'd be E, gonna add discussion, action, um, allowing the DPW superintendent to appoint Michael Kernisky to a labor position effective Monday, July eleventh, at the labor's rate. And other than that, there's just one other comment I wanna make, that really has nothing to do with village government or not. I just wanna warn everybody, the yellow jackets are in the ground and active, I got nailed twice yesterday walking through my yard, be aware of it, they are mean. Other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Thanks.
I will just stick to the agenda.
I have a question for Greg real quick, regarding this development, proposed development. Obviously, there'll have to be a full-blown traffic study for the area. Who decides whether a light is appropriate? Is that a result of the traffic study?
Well, I, I think that's gotta come out of the, the process, you know, and, and we don't know if their traffic study is gonna fly. Do we need to have our engineer conduct a different type of traffic study? John, uh, the chairman of the planning board and I were talking about this today, you know, there are other items that we need to look at, you know, are there needs for controlled intersections elsewhere in the village? Traffic's obviously increased, uh, housing's increased, uh, so traffic must, uh, but.
Or similar to what they have, like a Brundage where you've got the single-direction entrance and exits.
Right, we've got.
You can't, you can't take that left on two, or something like that, but all of that's decided at the, the planning board.
It's all done with the planning board process, but, um, that's why the planning board works with engineers, um, and, you know, our engineering firm has other, you know, expertise, you know, on hand that can help the planning board look at mitigating traffic. Um, you know, this board, in the end, you know, has, has to look at what the planning board comes up with and, and sees, see if that's appropriate for, for this type of a zone change, so, um, yeah, that, that's part of the process. I mean, this, this may be, I'd hate to put a number on it, I mean, this could be a six month or more process, that they've got complete sets of plans that they've gotta get to us from traffic to stormwater. Uh, we've gotta have the fire department involved. The schools probably need to weigh in on, on their capacity. Uh, there's different, you know, like I said, there's just different layers of oversight with a project like this, so.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Is it, am I out of order to ask a question?
Yes, but go ahead.
But it, it kinda sounds like you're assuming that this is, this zone change is gonna come.
Not at all.
Okay, I'm just, because to me, as someone who, you know, I feel like the people who live here already should take precedent over people who wanna come in and change zoning. But, you know, I just pay taxes.
Could I, my, part of my point was what you were making, but, um, my, my thought was the failures of the Lysander meetings, when they allow the construction of the Autozone warehouse with the traffic studies. I think that kinda plays more directly now to all of us. So I think when they do really give you information on the traffic study and, and what it does, I think you really need to pay attention to the four corners around Oneida Street, and really look at that as the major driver, because I think that's what all of our thoughts and concerns are. The policeman only do so much, there's a lot of tractor trailer traffic, so I really think that you guys need to look at that more closely than any other part of that whole puzzle. Thank you.
Okay, then we turn it over for the mayor's comments.
Yeah, just a couple of things being, uh, we've gotten a lot of comments last week for fireworks show on Friday. Apparently it was a misunderstanding of what time it was gonna start. People expected, people get used to it starting at dusk, it just gets dark, all of a sudden fireworks starts. The promoter had different ideas and had it scheduled for ten-thirty. We're just gonna have to ask him to do a better job of communicating that, so that people that go know that. That being said, I heard the fireworks display was terrific, uh, the concert was great, a lot of people, uh, you know, we've had fireworks a couple years ago, everybody said, the mayor doesn't like fireworks, and we never have any. We had three already this year. I don't get any credit. The, in reference to Joe's comments about the state project, I will say this, um, I didn't know that the state was doing a project until about three days before they started. We got no letters, no communication whatsoever, but we've been so happy to hear that it was gonna get done, that nobody could really complain. And of course, they did it fast and quick, and all of a sudden it was done. I will contact my contact at the state DOT and tell them about our concerns about the curbing, and, uh, I don't know that there, if it's gonna do us any good, uh, but there was, I got not one ounce of communication saying this project was happening, except five months ago, and he said, we're gonna do it. And then all of a sudden, the signs went up, you know, on the four sides of the four corners, and said it starts on Monday. So, um, a little bit of a communications problem, um, we'll see. It's worth saying something, I don't know if it'll make any difference if they'll, if they'll ever come back and fix it, or if they can. Talking about the project, uh, for Phillips Street, uh, I had a nice chat today with planning board chairman Janet Donnell, uh, we talked quite a bit about this project. Uh, and both of us had concerns about the fact that there are traffic issues now, and what would be the situation if we added two hundred cars. The situation is, last week, we have, or last meeting, we forwarded the request to the planning board, there was a little confusion as to whether it was an official forward or whether we just asked them to look at it. That's been straightened out, uh, and we will hope that at some point, the planning board, and that's why we have a planning board, they, they specialize in that kind of stuff, traffic, lighting, sound, noise, schools, uh, all that type of stuff, and they will make, hopefully, a recommendation to us eventually. Uh, you know, end up going in front of SOCBO, which is the Syracuse Anadale County Planning Association, they'll make recommendations, particularly about traffic, uh, that's a big thing with them. Uh, so at this point, you know, we have a long way to go, and we hear everybody, everybody's saying, um, it's, it's difficult, because people wanna live in Baldensville. And we have a lot of people that, that I talk to who say, from what we hear, from people that are moving to the area, Baldensville is the most requested area to look at homes. They love the school district, they love the river coming through the village, all the restaurants we have, uh, the fact that we don't have any big businesses to cause noise pollution and that type of stuff. So there's a lot to, to say about Baldensville. Somebody mentioned a different way to get traffic through, there wasn't a proposal several years ago, to put a bridge over the Sycamore River, so it would basically go from Van Buren Road to where the bypass runs between Thirty-One and Three Seventy, it would have extended right across there, so that people wouldn't have had to go through the village. Uh, I think when they finally realized what that was gonna cost, that got tossed aside, and if you mention it now to anybody from the state, they kinda laugh at you. So, we have to try to do what we can do with traffic issues. John is here tonight from the planning board, so he's heard these comments along with the ones he heard at the planning board meeting, and, uh, you know, we, we don't go into this stuff with the idea we're gonna just slap something in there. Uh, we wanna, we wanna make sure that we look at all the angles, that we do the best job we can do for our residents, and, you know, this is a, there's a big push in the state and in the country to provide affordable housing, particularly for people with disabilities, uh, low, lower income. Uh, this project on Phillips Street and the project that's kinda geared to go next door to St. Mary's Apartments, both have aspects of that within them. Uh, you know, so it's hard to just say, we can't look at that, we don't mind, because there's people that need some of that housing, but if that's the right place, that's what we'll try to decide. And I have a lot of faith in the planning board, I, in, in talking with John, I think John is on the same page. Uh, you know, whatever we do, we wanna do what's the best for the most people, and we'll let go of that. We have received a couple of letters, board members should have received them, similar to the stuff you heard tonight. And I also was not aware, had never heard that school buses weren't supposed to be on Sixty Road and Phillips Street. We'll have to check with, uh, you know, the rules that went in back when that planning board session took place to approve them, while we didn't have anything to do with that, south side of the village. So I, I don't know where that would've come from, but I'll see what I can find out. I can check with the school district, and we'll see if that is an issue, if they indeed are not supposed to be coming down that way, then we should stop them. It's the least we can do. And, that aside, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Moving on to department heads, our attorney.
Uh, just to let you know, I had a rather lengthy discussion today with the attorney for the applicant for the Phillips Street project, and, um, in reviewing the, the planning, he did indicate that they had, uh, he had specifically worked with the proponents to map out something that was, uh, compatible with our R-two zoning, and so he requested again that we move forward with the rezoning in R-two, not Planned Development District, because that's their initial request. And he also requested that we refer the matter to the county planning board, or the SOCBO, which we need to do. Right now, there's nothing officially before the board, other than the, uh, the letter application, that was, there's no legislation pending. So I will draft a proposed local law, which would rezone the property to R-two, so that the board has something for which ultimately we can go to public hearing, and that will allow me also to finalize the package and send it on to SOCBO for their, uh, comments, particularly with respect to traffic, um, and then we can start also, so going into the, the seeker requirements relative to not only traffic, but also what to run off the, and the other things that can be done. So, I just wanna let the board know, I'll go ahead and draft something and get it out to everybody.
Bob, can I ask you a quick question about what legal authority this board has in terms of rejecting a proposal? Do we have to have? Do we have to have a list of reasons why or can we just say no?
No, if you can, uh, this is a legislative matter relative to, um, the zoning of R2. And so it's, it's, uh, there, there doesn't need to be any list of reasons yes or no. It's, it's, like I say, it's a, it's a legislative matter that doesn't get reviewed relative to the, um, the same items that you'd see before a zoning order or planning board. So it's, it's a, um, it's a decision of the, of the boards. The, and again, this, this whole project has two elements to it, really. One is the rezoning in the first place. The second is the development itself. And in many cases, what happens is the rezoning, uh, takes place and it's the, um, it's the site plan development, which then accommodates all of the questions that people have relative to traffic, relative to, um, the, uh, the buffering that's necessary for the residential, uh, properties that are adjacent to it. So it, it, as I say, it's something that I, I think the board needs to at least take a look at, um, relative to the, uh, the environmental aspects of it and then see also what SOCCA has to say. But I, in order to, uh, to, uh, vote on it, you have, you have to have something to vote on, which we, which right now you don't have.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, uh... I know it's a quick question, but there's, when you ask counsel, there's never quit me, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm from another world, so I get a third world language. You're also listening to a lawyer. Did he answer your question?
Yes, he did. Yes.
So you have to dismiss it or you have to...
In my opinion, what he said, right now, we don't even have anything in front of us to vote on. But if that's put in front of us, then we can vote up or down.
Well, it is up to you, not the legislature.
It's up, we are the legislature that will vote on a zone change. If we vote in favor of a zone change, it then goes to the planning board to figure out all the details. If, my understanding is if we don't approve the zone change, the developer's probably going to say, "No," because he can't build what he wants. I don't know, but...
What about the environmental?
That's the seeker process.
Oh, no, between my neighbor and myself, we have a culvert that goes under the road and the water just flows down through there, right, right into where they're going to be doing this. So what do they do with that?
They have to address, stormwater is something they'll really have to address.
I mean, when it rains hard, it flows down through there.
This is a tight call and action, so there'll be, there'll be hearings on the seeker as well.
By the way, thank you, and I'm sorry, really did not understand.
Just for clarification, when he says seeker, that's the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And it's something that's required to be looked at pretty thoroughly for a, for a project like this. Uh, so they look at stormwater, uh, traffic, uh, species of, you know, impacts on endangered species. Um, I mean, it's a, it's a process.
Indian burial grounds.
Right.
Remember where the bridge was supposed to go out by Belgium? They had to shift it. It couldn't, couldn't go where it was supposed to, or was proposed, things like that.
Other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
So my question, if I could just ask something about the rezoning? So if you rezone it to an R2, if this development doesn't go through, it's still an R2 for whatever other complex wants to come in, correct? That, that's just my question.
We get to do this again and again and again.
Don't let the Coats office, he's up soon anyway.
That's, that's pretty much right. I mean, the, the board normally doesn't do just a zone change without some type of a plan in front of them. Uh, that's why, you know, we had looked at doing a Plan Development District, which gives the, uh, I guess it's a different type of, uh, zone change. And it doesn't really get voted on as a zone change until the site plan has been approved by the planning board. Is that correct, Bob?
Yes, I mean, as I say, they're, they're, uh, they had a request, uh, before the board for the, for the R2, and they've requested that we move forward with that. And this is a, a decision that the board could make. If the board wants to move into a PDD, um, as opposed to an R2, that's a decision the board can make. But I was going to say, they, they have filed a request for rezone, and that's something that the board should, would need to take up and then make determinations.
What more authority would we have to dictate what happens in a PDD versus an R2 change?
Well, the board could, can on its own rezone Plan Development District. That's what they decide to do.
Logistically, as far as what could happen to the property at that point, we, we would just be defining what could happen in a PDD?
Right, and you, you know, there'd be more rules and regulations relative to what would happen. And we have the same thing down, uh, on the Downers Street.
So, I mean, so I think all of residents around the area would be like against this being built, this being changed, zoning.
I hear you.
So like...
We're aware of that.
So I mean, what do we have to do to, um...
I would say be persistent.
Okay.
I just want to say, normally, a board meeting, we wouldn't just have comments back and forth, but because this is so important to you guys on an emotional level.
I appreciate that. And I, I do have some letters with my name, like ADD, so it's a little difficult for me sometimes.
You remain vigilant, keep in touch with us.
Keep coming back.
Yeah.
For the neighbors?
Yep.
The, the planning board meetings are all public meetings as well. You can attend planning board meetings. You can, Greg, you usually know what the agenda is going to be, right?
Right.
So people can check in. Once a month, you hold a meeting typically?
It's the fourth Tuesday of every month. Um, I mean, sometimes they don't have a meeting if there's nothing on the agenda.
Right, that's what I'm saying. They could contact your office and see if, if this project is going to be on the agenda.
Yeah, it's on the website.
I put the agenda on the website. Coats has a Facebook page. Village has a Facebook page that they get put on, so...
And elected officials listen to their constituents. The farther up you go, the, the ladder to Washington, your, your voice is smaller.
Right.
But elected officials listen to constituents. When they have to guess what the constituents want, it's very difficult. So make your feelings known, just like you are tonight.
Thank you.
And with that, I'm going to move on to the village clerk.
Okay. Um, I'm going to stick with the agenda, but Ruth from Canton Woods just wanted me to remind everyone that the car show is on August 8th with the rain date of the 15th. Um, if you have any questions about it, just check the website or call the senior center. Otherwise, I will, there's no questions, I'll stick to the agenda.
So we killed two birds with one stone.
Moving on to the treasurer, Mark.
Uh, just so you have your financials, uh, right up through the end of June. And, and so, um, I, I get in the habit of reviewing them on a, on a regular basis, ask questions if you, uh, have to. And the budget management process will act, become more active, um, in the next month. And you'll be hearing more about that as we go through the rest of the year. We start to run up against, um, where we're spending up to our budget. So with that, the rest is the agenda.
Moving on to the superintendent of public records.
Yeah, there's a couple of quick things. We finished up the brush this week, so we're not going, we're not on brush next week. We've also been able to get in 54 trees. Our forces alone last year took down almost 120 roadside trees for the, the ashtray, the dead trees. And then, um, we had a contractor take a bunch more down. Fifty-four is a lot of trees again, but we're just finishing up. And if they're in front of your house, if you would, uh, we're trying to get back to water some of them because it gets so hot. If you'd water them for us, it's great. Uh, but we're pretty thrilled that we're able to get that many in that quickly. Because the contractor calls and says, "Your trees are, they're out of the ground." So we kind of get them in as quick as we could. Next week, we're going to be starting on the playground at Community Park. We talked about that briefly earlier. Part of what our process is going to be, we're going to do some of the site work for it to get it ready. It's, like I said, it's going to be delivered on the 12th, they're going to start on the 17th. Um, that should be a good project when it's done. We're hoping to get some free time to work on that project before our streets start. With that, unless there are questions? All set?
Moving on to the Coats officer. His phone fell over.
Yeah, the other camera died, so here we are. Uh, I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay. Then moving on to police chief, but we have Lieutenant Mike with us tonight.
Um, just a couple of things to address. I know a number of you guys just brought up the amount of tractor trailers coming down. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we had an officer go and speak with everybody, you know, the, all the companies that have tractor trailers coming out of their areas. Um, one of the problems that we're running into are, you know, you might have a driver that just comes from out of state, comes in, is doing a delivery this one time. The problem that they're doing is, it's, it's an overweight road. Commercial GPS costs a lot of money, so they're not really buying the commercial GPSs, they're buying personal GPSs, and their GPS is actually bringing them up this route. Um, our, we had an officer that we're tacking for this project, and we had her meet with Lysander, Chuck, I believe. They talked to you yet about, about making signs. And even for the police department, we're like, "We'll make them up." You know, "We'll work with Chuck to get them." But we were talking about with Lysander, um, because obviously, all the trucks, once they hit the village, there's nowhere to turn around. So we're looking for bigger signs than just a small little five-ton, just directing like a big sign that says, "Last stop, all truck, all truck traffic, no traffic behind, you know, beyond this," just to try to eliminate it. Um, you know, it, it won't eliminate it completely, it's a road, somebody might not see it. Uh, we know a number of trucks hit the Parkway Bridge every year, and we know how many signs are lit up and everything with that. So, um, but, um, I will have our speed century put up on Mechanic Street, also follow up and have it put up on, uh, Phillips Street. And those are always followed with a traffic detail that we do there. Um, if you guys ever have traffic concerns, my name's Mike Lockwood, I'm the lieutenant here. Just call up the police department anytime, just let us know, and we'll address it the best we can. Besides that, um, I just wanted to kind of fill you in. The chief, a while ago, um, saw in another jurisdiction, um, a pedestrian crossing, and, uh, reached out to the state. The state, he reached out like a couple of years ago, or maybe last year. He ended up following up with another email and contacted with them recently. They did a study. Um, they looked at like crash, crash history, pedestrian traffic, uh, traffic volume and onsite conditions for the crosswalks on, originally, we were approved for this pedestrian crossing at the crosswalks on Syracuse Street, uh, right at Marble, and East Tennessee Street and Virginia Street. We were ecstatic that we were approved for both of these, but one of the ones that we really wanted is the one on 48 by Brown Street, where students cross, where you have the crest of the hill, where we've had some accidents there, uh, involving students crossing and everything on bikes. Um, so the chief reached back out to them. They reevaluated, looked at it, and we were approved for all site, three site locations. So, just wanted to fill you in on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Marcy should let your granddaughter know.
Yep. Continuing to do the effect.
Do you think they own the, the... Yeah, they do. No, who owns the, up on Brown Street, who owns the little light that's there now? We shouldn't own that?
We pay, we pay the electric, we pay the electric on there.
I'm just wondering for, if it could be moved to the crosswalk by the church, the kids go across to the smokers' path to the school, instead of throwing it away, if it works perfectly. Because we had talked about wanting to put the crosswalk there too. That's just a thought.
That's it?
Okay.
Sorry.
I do have one question. Um, would one other possibility for the intersection of Phillips and Oneida to be, to put some of those "stop, mean stop" on the, on the stop signs?
That is definitely, you know, obviously, the more, the reason when we had the proposal and somebody came to the board, um, I don't know if you guys noticed, you lived there, I hope you did notice that we have the "stop, mean stop" at the intersections of the school right there. Um, I'm not opposed to looking in and even putting them there. We even had the discussion that, you know, for problem, intersections like this, we should put them up. We just didn't want to put them up in every single location on every stop sign because then it becomes commonplace and it just becomes like the regular stop sign.
Right.
So that's the reason that we didn't go further than that, but we can definitely look into that.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay. We're on the pending business discussion, possible action authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support for CDS Monarch's proposed development to create 70 affordable housing units at a 19 Phillips Street. Mr. Mayor, do you still want that on the agenda at this point?
Um, at this point, I, I talked to two people from, uh, the project, uh, one who originally proposed it and, and another fellow today. And I told both of them that there's just still too many questions, uh, too many things to be taken care of, uh, that there were a lot of concerns by residents with, with, as far as traffic, uh, other questions that we have that, uh, I also didn't realize, one of them pointed out to me the other day that the project on, uh, Monkey Hollow, which is right next to St. Mary's Apartments, they're going to be applying for a similar type of tax break that the Phillips Street group has. And he said to me, "If we both apply at the same time, there's a chance that, good chance that one of us will not get accepted." So I said to them, "Well, I'm not picking sides yet. You know, we haven't heard any project proposals. I mean, we're really hearing now what residents think. And so I would say that I'm not going to do anything to support either one of them until I hear more information. So I would just say, we can scratch that off, not put it out in the pending, if something comes up, we'll just add it to the next agenda."
Are they asking, when you say a tax break, is that the OCIDA thing or is it another kind of tax?
It's, I believe they would pay, basically pay full tax, but they get a tax break from either the, like, the state.
Okay.
You know, so that they end up not paying as much, but I think we would still get mostly what we expect we should get from a regular project.
Okay.
So, you know, things are still, like Bob's saying, you know, at this point, we don't have anything to go down as far as the zone change. There's still too many things up in the air for me to write a letter and say, "I think this is a wonderful project." It might be someday, but today, no.
I agree with you. Glad to hear that. You just got an applause. You didn't even have to shoot off fireworks.
Come Nancy likes me, go way back.
He gets a vote.
Did you hear that?
No.
She said she voted for you. Last time.
Let's keep it that way.
Uh, moving on to new business. Can I have a motion authorizing the mayor to sign the police mutual aid agreement?
Moved.
Second.
Everyone familiar with it? You like that? Mike explained it to us last time.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I guess there's no after pose, there's no one else here. So carried. Item B, discussion possible action to, in regard to assessing a fee for noncompliance against Chuck Chow Creative Concert Security Deposit. against Chuck Chow Creative Concert Security Deposit.
What happened? Portageons weren't cleaned and they left where they weren't supposed to be. Either Chuck or Megan could address this.
Chuck can, Chuck can explain the circumstances for which we're considering this.
Part of the, in the agreement, they're supposed to clean the, clean the island up and and get it ready because there's people constantly walking out there, taking pictures and what have you.
It's a park.
It's a park. And, um, the, they put the porta potties all around into the park and and the end of the island. And, uh, they were supposed to be removed. They weren't removed and they weren't cleaned for almost a week and a half. And, uh, the promoter kept blaming the, the guy that picks them up, the guy that picks them up, said that wasn't his agreement. So they went back and forth. I was on the phone with them daily, and I believe the mayor spoke with them a few times too, and they just didn't do it, didn't get it done. We currently still have concrete blocks out there from the first event that they have not picked up. We did want to move, move, uh, the building. They did not move their building for almost two and a half weeks. And they did get the, the building moved back to where we asked them. After all our conversations over the first event, the second event, they're great and they've been cleaning up since, but the first one was not good. And those porta potties, it was, it was warm. And they did not get cleaned for almost a week and a half. And then they're supposed to move them, to get them, to get them out of the way there. Last week, it worked out very well. They moved them, and as they moved the last, the last porta potty off there, a wedding party came out to take pictures. Now, for a week and a half, nobody could have used it. And I told them they may be looking at some of the security deposits, and he's very well aware of it. And it just did not get cleaned up and did not get taken care of.
So I need air.
So then the discussion is, do we want to assess a penalty?
Yeah.
The security deposit is, was held, is it $1,500? If we were to assess some or all of it, then he needs to make a hole before his next concert?
I'm not sure. His next concert is tomorrow, so they might have to do that. That's up to the board, but they might have to do it to the next one, but.
Well.
He is going to be stopping in tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, all right.
To pay for the last concert, so I'm not sure.
So realistically, how much do you think it costs us in time?
Well, that was, and I talked to the attorney about that, that was part of the, we didn't do anything because we don't have the means of of moving those porta potties.
I, I'm not talking about the physical part of it. I'm talking about just your time and dealing with phone calls.
Well.
Because I think that there should be enough to cover your time. And then the punitive part of not being able to use the island for the other residents that didn't get to use it.
And I think the bigger thing is just the mess that was left there. And, um, and they knew they were supposed to clean it up, and they just did not. And we weren't, normally, we'll be able to go out and make the change and clean up, but we couldn't do that because of the porta potties, because we don't have any way of cleaning them and moving them. So they were just left in our park a mess for a week and a half. So they didn't, and it might be a question for Bob, but they didn't clean up like they were supposed to, and we really didn't have a mechanism. Part of the problem with the tents were left out, there's tables and chairs that were left out, there's tables and chairs that were left on the state property. And if you call another tent company, they wouldn't come in and get the tents because they don't belong to them. And if you call another porta potty company, they don't want to come in because they're not their porta potties. But, and I forgot to say, but the tents were left out, the chairs and tables were left against the, against the, um, side of the island, out by the, on the state property, the chairs and tables were left.
Did this impact the use of the island the next morning?
Oh, anybody that walked, walked through there.
Church on the island?
It just, it was, they had their vents, but it was just messy and and it was stinky. Or, I mean, I, the porta potties were a mess. And there was a couple of them right there next to the, to the island also. So I guess the, the bigger question is, they didn't leave it as it was when they got there. And they didn't, and it's not like they fixed it the next day. It was a week and a half.
And I'm, I'm reading directly from the, the, the agreement that we have with them that says the promoter shall be responsible to clean the grounds, restrooms, and facilities on Paper Mill Island following each event. What that includes, and all areas shall be cleaned and the park completely vacated no long, no later than 9:00 AM the day following each event. So, I mean, Chuck was dealing with it for 10 days, um, just to get the, not even the portageons, but the other, the other things cleaned up. So I think, I think it is appropriate to assess some sort of.
Do we have like a set fee?
We don't, because we've never had to do this before. And and the mayor was involved in a lot too with, with the emails, and he was very quick about calling me, telling me he was going to do it, but they just didn't.
That's why I asked how many hours you think you spent, because that's something we can put a concrete number on. And then the punitive side would be, so it doesn't happen again. So if you said it took you, you know, you were two hours into it with phone calls and discussions, then we could quantify that monetarily. And then figure out what we want to charge for writing the agreement.
And under the security deposit, it reads, in the event the village opts to assess a fee against the deposit for damage or nonperformance, including but not limited to failure to clean the Paper Mill Island following an event, so.
And we have assessed a fee before. I recall.
Yes.
Somebody left it a mess and you, you guys had to go clean it up.
And this we did not, just because.
You couldn't.
That was a different promoter. That was a large assessment, and they came back and and asked us to reduce it. We did.
I think this was the same promoter.
It was the same promoter.
Okay, so, okay.
Just a different.
Co-promoter.
Yes.
Before they had the, before we had the.
Yes.
This agreement in place that clearly stated it, so.
Well, I think we should think about this in two ways. One, do we want to do it? And two, how much?
I want to do it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I mean, I'm willing to go as much as a thousand. Yeah.
Yeah, let's do a thousand, and if they come back and ask for a reduction, we can discuss it then. But I think $1,000 is appropriate.
Hot summer day, you have to hang out by a stinky porta potty.
If you went out on the island, take pictures of something, it was not good.
Okay.
And the only thing is, do we, are they going to pay us that before? Are they going to reverse or?
Well, considering if they have a concert tomorrow night, I don't know if that's.
Maybe we could just have something to send them tomorrow.
Is the concert tomorrow night, sort of the same thing with the porta potty in a bag? And you're going to have to.
No, they, they, well, they've done, they've done, they've had several since then, because we haven't had a board member, so we haven't addressed it at board meeting. But, um, they've cleaned up very well since then, but it was not good the first day. And they've been told that we were going to be talking to them.
He asked if it was going to be in the back.
Oh, in the back, that's where they're pushing them, in the back for now, yes. Get them off the island, so they're supposed to get them back there out of the way.
All right.
Need a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to assess a $1,000 fee for noncompliance against Chuck Chow's security deposit.
Second.
Make in the amount of?
$1,000.
$1,000.
I'm sure we'll be getting an appeal to consider later, but.
They know it's coming. They're very well aware of.
Okay.
Well, that is, I'm in the building to talk.
That also is in the contracts. We need to tell them that we're doing it, so by making this, it wouldn't impact tomorrow's concert. We're, we're going to inform them. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, so be it.
There's like something, do you want something written up? Or are you just going to tell him on the phone and like?
Probably should be written.
I would put it in writing.
I'll go to your office tomorrow, we'll address it.
Write a letter and I'll sign, I'll sign it.
They'll know in the morning, Nick.
Item C, motion to set a public hearing at 7:30 on PM on Thursday, July 21st, 2022, to consider a proposed local law amending the village code of the Village of Baldensville, Chapter 268-6, providing that all nonconforming signs in existence at the time of the adoption of the current sign code be discontinued and removed on or before August 1st, 2025, and that any major modifications or changes to existing nonconforming signs requires the signs to become conforming to the provisions of the code.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't even give you a chance to discuss. I figured you'll discuss at the public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay. For anybody out there, nonconforming signs tend to be signs that are too big. Something's not right with them, and they've just been there and and been there and been there, and this is a way to set a date that you've got to fix it. Okay. Item D, motion authorizing the mayor to sign the SRO agreement with the Baldensville Central School District for the year 2022, 2023, school year.
Moved.
Second.
And SRO is a school resource officer, in case you didn't know it. Okay.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good thing, Mike. I like this. Good agreement.
Are there any major changes to the agreement?
No, I, I took a look. It's actually a template from, uh, last, the last year's agreement.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item E, discussion, action, appointing, authorizing Chuck McAuliffe, DPW superintendent, to hire Michael Korniski, effective Monday, July 11th, at a labor's rate.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any?
He's, he's taken, uh, one of the individuals that, that just left the Howard Department. He's replacing him, and he comes with a lot of experience, and I think he'll be good for it. And, and we're short people, and I was back in again today, and I said, when did you get started? He goes, how's Monday? And I went, we get to the board meeting, it'd be great.
And for the edification of the, the board, he starts at this labor's rate, um, and actually a reduced rate as a new hire for the next year while he's being evaluated by Chuck as he, and then would eventually move into being, would he be an MEO?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And, and, and really depends on how like, oh, we might, we may bump him up earlier just because we're going to need plow drivers, you know, because one, one retired or one left. So, and if we get him, and we get him in that position, and it works out well, we can bump him up a little quicker.
And if anybody's out there looking for employment, Chuck's still looking for employees.
Yeah, one more, one more individual is retiring the first of months.
Okay, unless there's any other action, did we, Pat, did I, did we vote on that?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I guess, um, mayor, what do you think about having, as soon as the DPW and the Lions Club get their community park project finalized and all taken care of, we have a, maybe a, um, meeting out there or something like that? I know we discussed when we were at Mercer Park about having a couple of different venues besides just right here, outside or things like that, maybe to showcase the new, the new features at that park while we have a meeting.
That's something we can certainly talk about. There's not much right at the playground, there's not much of a, area to have a meeting, but.
We sit in the grass, that mayor.
We have a pavilion out there.
Is this community development funds? For the playground?
We're probably going to have to have a ribbon cutting. They like, they like to come out and have pictures taken.
Fine, we'll do that then. Just want to be outside.
I thought you were going to suggest we have a cookout.
Have a cookout, we'll have, whatever. Yeah, what can I request an open container?
A second.
I have a motion to pay all bills is audited.
Yeah, sorry about that, Bruce.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at whatever time most, 8:54.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. See, board meetings aren't as boring as you, boring as you might have thought they would be.